Well, good evening, everyone. We're so glad to see so many wonderful families here tonight, and we are excited to recognize our students. I'm going to call to order the Merrimack School Board meeting of June 17th, 2024, and ask that everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Because we have so many wonderful recognitions tonight, we're going to go ahead and do our recognitions, and then we're going to do public participation. So if you are here to make a public comment, please remain for after our recognitions. We're going to switch this around so that we can recognize these wonderful students. So I'm going to turn it over to Bill Olson.
Thank you, Lori. Our first recognition will be for three outstanding students who have achieved the honor of receiving the Seal of Bilitaracy from the state of New Hampshire awarded through the school district, certainly. The certificate of the Seal of Bilitaracy is a very high honor for a student in that not too many qualify for it. It is a very rigorous exam that assesses a student's ability in multiple languages, in reading, writing, listening, and speaking. And we are very proud to say that three of the students who received this recognition in New Hampshire, in the Merrimack School District, Jennifer Epstein, Karia Fu, and P'leese, I apologize if I pronounced your name incorrectly, and Maeve LaRocque. So if you would come forward, we will be glad to give you your certificate.
Bill, can I just ask a question while they're up here? This is so random, but which languages for each one of them? Spanish, all of them. Nice. All right, so next, are you introducing or me? Well, I have a microphone, so me. Okay. So next, we are introducing or we're awarding some certificates for the JMU's Kindness Counts Awards. And those are the first, we have three categories of certificates to give out tonight. We're going to start with the Kindness Counts Awards from JMU's. I have not read any of these names before, so I'm going to do my best to pronounce them correctly. First up is Colton Miller. Next is Gavin Finnegan. Next is Lila Bisbo. If we call your name, please come up. Gavin and Colton, are you here? No, okay. Lila, we're glad you're here.
And stay here.
Yeah, stay right up here. Yep. Noah Rowe. Lila Miller. Sidney Winkler. Heidi Karen. Colton LaFond. Riley Morrison. Connor McInnis. Landon Beers. Okay. Our next category is the JMU's Respectful Student Awards. Do we want to clap? I was going to say, space issues. Okay, here we go. Owen Columbus. Carolyn Salazar. Donovan Merrill. Ilanie Fescolet. Jacob Klakowski. Kylie Loether. Daniel Foley. Benjamin Weldon. Jason Kellett. Reese Romano. And Thomas Marisak. All right. Give them a big round of applause. And lastly, our last category is the JMU's Good Citizen Awards. Let me know when you're ready. You ready? Okay. Sadie Merrill. Okay. Bryn Mikalaj... Mikalajazak. Bryn, I want you to tell me how to pronounce your name before we leave, because I'm absolutely fascinated. Okay, here we go. Jordan Burns. Dakota Heath. Trista Poplar. Kaylee Hairnick. Jack Rondo. John Saad. Addison Hall. William Jaff. And Thomas Hill. And that is it. Nice big round of applause for these.
So I just wanted to thank the parents, because the core values really begin at home. So all these awards are also attributed to all the hard work you do in your home. So thank you.
And I would like to say that while we know you would love to stay for the reading of the strategic plan, it is not at all rude to not stay if you have better plans. And we'll take a minute to let everyone leave. Nice job. Thank you. All right, as the last few people that were here for the wonderful recognitions exit the room, I want to open it up for public participation. We have the mic up here. If we have anyone remaining who would like to make a public comment, please state your name and your address. If you're a student, you do not have to state your address. Not unexpectedly. I see no one going to the mic, so we will move on to our old business, the board's response to the Merrimack Village District's low-salt use on Continental. So let me just reread the letter that we were asked to discuss. It says, "Dear NHDOT, Merrimack Village District is requesting that the New Hampshire Department of Transportation use a low-salt or limited-salt route from the Exit 10 on-ramp from DW Highway Southbound onto Industrial Drive, continuing south on Continental Boulevard to end where Continental meets Milford Road. The undersigned town officials support this change in winter maintenance as this route is within the wellhead protection area that provides drinking water to the business and residents of Merrimack. As Mr. Emery had discussed before, wellhead 3 is the main wellhead in that area, and they would like to see the DOT move away from salt and oversalt to a brine pre-storm position." So I want to open it up for board discussion.
So my limited understanding on how we use salt in our... Because this is specifically Thornton's Ferry area, right? This is what we're talking about. I think we owe some, we have a responsibility as environmentally conscious neighbors to our community to hear what they're saying, because there were some pretty troubling, I thought, some pretty troubling numbers with the salt levels going up in our water supply. I also understand that we have an obligation to keep our school properties safe for students, staff, parents, anybody who's on site. So I guess I'm wondering if there's a way to do something, kind of meet their needs, but at the same time not sacrificing potential liability. So that was where I...
So one of the things that I had thought of, just in full transparency, is the potential of drafting our own letter. Because when we stay open, we are liable for the buses. If a person chooses to go to work or go on their way in the middle of a storm, that's their liability. So there is a different consideration here for that area for us. We always try to make the very best decision. Central Office does a very good job and very serious. I know parents don't like getting 5:30 a.m. phone calls, but sometimes we need that data to make that decision. But I'm concerned about the language of the existing letter not taking in that consideration. And I'm wondering if the board might be interested in drafting a letter of our own stating, "Though we support the reduction of salt use in that area, we want safety to be the first priority." It's just a thought that I had. Lori, did you want to say something?
I totally agree, and that's why I was, you know, wanted us to take the two weeks to be able to reflect, because we do have a different obligation. We have a number of buses, and even though the brine solution works fine, if all of a sudden it dips to freezing, we're going to have freezing roads. We have, you know, young students on those buses. They don't have seat belts. So if, you know, the town does have a different legal liability than we do, if we could, you know, write a letter through our attorney that says, "Yes, you know, we definitely want to see the reduction. We definitely want to move in that direction, but we still want to keep safety as our number-one priority." I agree.
And I would add, because we asked a lot of good questions when they were here about our own properties, things like that. And Matt did some interesting research on that as far as our own properties. But being on the Joint Loss Management Committee, one of our top claims is slip and falls. And this year, we, the custodians, the maintenance team, Tom Tussow, Matt, have done an excellent job of reducing those claims using salt as part of that. And there's an entire schedule of ensuring that our walkways and our parking lots are safe. So we need to maintain our own autonomy regarding our student and faculty and staff safety as well. So I'm just putting that out there, because even in our draft letter, we are still retaining our own safety prevention policies on our properties. And we're willing to look into other things and working with them, but we have to keep that as a high priority.
And I was going to say, like, I don't know how much the machine is that the town has that does brine, but I think it's a costly investment. So it would be something we would need to look at for, you know, the town does have the, you know, the ability or that equipment, but we don't, right? Or do we, Matt?
No, we contract with CSSI, Steve and Connie Halvatsis, for at least 12 years now. The town stopped plowing our lots probably around 12, 13 years ago, so we contracted with Halvatsis. They don't have this gear. We're going to treat our lots as we have in the past, and we definitely need to use salt on our sidewalks. In fact, we have blue-colored salt, so the people can see that the sidewalks have been treated. And then each custodian who's on during the day will have a log going, "I salted the sidewalk on this area, and I salted this area myself," and put it down on a log, and we have that. So if this is slip and fall, we have a recording of the last time it was salted on the sidewalks. But all parking lots and everything like that, it's going to be salt.
And I don't think their concern was really our property or the salt we're throwing out on the walkway. I think their concern really is the, you know, everything that's happening on the roadway, on Continental. Really, it's Continental, and what it takes to keep that safe. And so as long as we can say, "Yes, we absolutely support you using brine" as long as safety is the number-one priority and salt is considered if the brine becomes inadequate or something like that.
The brine is just Continental, right? So on Camp Sergeant Road, because Thornton's Ferry is 134 Camp Sergeant Road, the town's probably going to use salt. On Ingham Road, which goes perpendicular to Camp Sergeant where the kids come over and they cross, they're going to use salt. So they're just talking Continental.
And am I remembering correctly in that they, it was specifically an area that was around wetlands, right? And that's not where Thornton's Ferry was? Am I, is that accurate? Okay.
Close to, I think.
On Continental Boulevard, south of Thornton's Ferry, there's a piece of property owned by Penachuck, and that's wet.
Yeah.
Other than that, that's as close as it gets.
So I think the big concern here is that we want to protect our liability. And that's what I think is the deciding factor, to draft our own letter in support of the brine, but that DOT consider the safety of school buses and in that area going to Thornton's Ferry in particular. Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. I think we have to approach it from our lens, so I support that. I do, I, the stuff that they presented was concerning to me. And I, seeing that level of salt, especially where we already have water issues, I think it's valid to take that into consideration. So I would be interested in the folks that came and presented, like, if we, you know, what are ways we can do to mitigate that while still maintaining our sense of our safe area? So I guess maybe that's more of a question for him. So that would just be my only thing, is I think that we owe, we have a right, we are liable to keep our school areas safe. But at the same time, I think this is, you know, it's a serious thing that we should be looking at. So I'd be interested to see what they would have to say about how we could mitigate that.
So for the area of Continental, I would entertain a motion to pursue a letter of our own through attorney advisement.
I will second.
Well, I'm not making the motion.
Oh, I will make the motion that we draft our own letter through legal.
All right, so moved by Ken Martin.
Second.
Second by Lori Rothaus. All those in favor? 5-0-0. Thank you. And I agree, I was very disturbed by the exponential growth of salt and chemicals in our water. All right, moving on to new business. One of our favorite things towards, at the end of the year, are the highlights from the schools. And we're going to invite the high school, Merrimack High School team to the microphone, by the way. Thank you. Wonderful graduation on Saturday. Your team did a wonderful, wonderful job.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Steve Clay, principal, and this is Bill Manny Otis. He is our English department head. He's here for the next presentation. So I pulled him in because he played a role in our PSA and PSE, PSAT and SAT testing. So he's going to speak a little bit of that later. We're just going to run through a PowerPoint tonight. Before I get you into a glimpse of the year, I just want to thank school district administration, the school board, for your support as we embarked on a number of new initiatives this year that we felt provided more opportunities for student success. So a lot of what you're going to see in this PowerPoint is a result of your support. Thank you all. So, all right. So we had a great year, filled with success stories, driven by what I considered one of the most important facets to student learning, and that was just strong staff-student relationships. So these are just some pictures that were sent in by either students or staff, recapping, you know, a snapshot of the connections made through students and staff. So that was wonderful. Let's see. We had many different learning opportunities from our traditional curriculum to learning CPR, nature-based art, having some fun with the Chinese New Year, you know, obviously interactive labs, student-paced woodworking, just to name a few. And again, these are all pictures sent in by either teachers or staff of ongoing activities at the high school. Next, let's see, I'm on, yeah, that's the one. Students obviously experienced lots of outside of the classroom learning on several occasions, including a variety of trips to museums and conferences. And, you know, these are just photographs of all of those events. In October, we had over 140 students and teachers from South Korea visit us for a half-day of cultural exchange. They are returning at the end of October of this year. And this was an event that was, that occurred pre-COVID. And we decided we wanted to bring it back this year, and they will be coming annually from this point on. And we received just really great feedback on that event. More examples of academia beyond the classroom included our now four-time Granite State Challenge champions. It should be noted that we had, and these other examples as well. And it should be noted that we had approximately 68 co-creco clubs and activities that involve more than 700 students ongoing throughout the year. This slide is just a glimpse into some of our students' many talents. Our theater program grew dramatically this year by offering both a winter and spring performance. Our athletic team sent several teams to the playoffs this year. Our band and choral performance continued, as you witnessed at graduation, to be very, very strong. Our rejuvenated mock car crash includes student actors and one school board actor, and gave our seniors a reminder of the dangers of destructive decisions. Wonderfully, Unified Sports came back this year, and I want to thank Adam French, our new athletic director, for spearheading that. We had unified basketball and unified track. It was very popular with the school community. We had an activity during the day where the whole school came in to watch a unified basketball game, and it just brought the community together. We had several all-school events that added to our commitment to continue to build a welcoming and unified school community. I think we had four all-school activities in the gym this year that were, just were a lot of fun. Kids really enjoyed them. Our school counselors and social worker and SAP counselor had over 3,300 visits this year. This was the first year we administered the PSAT 8 and 9 as a whole-school assessment, and this was facilitated by the school counseling department. We had our first underclassman during the school day awards ceremony this year, this spring, which was a great way to recognize our underclassroom separately from our seniors. It was very well attended by both students and their parents. And we are, we were very grateful to offer scholarship to, grateful to our scholarship donors for our seniors as they, as students received over $140,000 worth of scholarships this year. So that was great. We just had a lot of collaboration, student-staff work, on recognizing the importance of mental health awareness in May this year. You know, that was driven by both students and staff. We had a guest speaker that was well-attended. Therapy talk attended as well, and it was a nice week to recognize the struggles of mental health. Is Harley still here? Nope. The first year of our Adult Diploma, ELO Coordinator, which was supported obviously by all of you. was supported obviously by all of you, was a huge success. We had 11 adult diploma graduates this year and did over, had over 45 extended learning opportunities. And, you know, in speaking with Harley just last week, this is certainly expected to increase next year. And those are just some examples of some of the ELOs we had. Bill's going to take over from here?
Sure. So as the, as our slide says, this is the first year that all students in grades nine and 10 took the PSAT. And I'm particularly thankful, we're particularly thankful to Amy Doyle for really supporting that because it gives us a chance to get more data. One of the things I've been really impressed about with Amy is that she is into data and she's, you know, really pushed that for us. And I think it, it just gives us a chance to, you know, to better measure our progress. So, you know, it's also important to say that these standardized tests are just one measure of our student progress. We are looking to implement common assessments in many of our classes in the upcoming school year as a way to further evaluate student progress.
Just click right on it.
Okay, that's easy enough. Okay, all right. Now I'm going to need my glasses for this. So as Steve mentioned earlier, this was the first year we administered PSAT eight, eight-nine to our students as a progress monitoring tool. Very few high schools do this. It's traditionally been a voluntary assessment for those students who want to take it. This slide illustrates that we scored a bit lower than state average. However, it should be noted that Merrimack High School represented a little less than 10% of the overall New Hampshire test takers. So I, I do think there's, there's really some, some growth that we can achieve here, but it also is a really good baseline for us moving forward. Perfect. Okay. Grade 10 also scored a bit lower than the state and hash average, but was much higher than, than all test takers. And this again was the PSAT 10, which, you know, all of our students took in, as 10th graders. We continue to, you know, to do well with our SAT. We, I thought we took a jump this year. We scored higher than the state average and higher than, than all other test takers. And that was definitely an encouraging sign, especially as we, we come out of COVID and we start to see, you know, those numbers trending upward. They obviously need to continue to do that. And I really believe they will. This, this year, many more students took the state science test than last year. Early data shows that, that 61% scored proficient or higher. We do not have the state data yet, but that should be coming out in, in the next few months, I believe. I, I think this might represent, represent obviously our crown jewel. I've been here 16 years and we have always performed really well on our AP exams. I'm going to put my glasses so I can read that over there. So, you know, this year we had 103 students, 33 students take 243 AP exams, okay, across 18 subjects, as the, as our slide says. That's a 25% increase from last year. I can just tell you anecdotally, we continue to see a lot of interest in, in AP language, you know, classes. We have doubled the amount of students in the last two years that wanted to take AP language. I think that's also going to translate for the English department into more AP literature students in the future. But I think this trend line has gone, you know, up across the board. That second, you know, note is, is again, something that we should all be proud of. You know, 100% of our MHS students received a passing score in seven AP subjects. That, that's pretty amazing because, you know, that's definitely much higher than, than some of the, the national trend lines. And, you know, we also continue to have students take multiple AP exams and be very successful. You know, 24% of our, of our students were AP scholars, which means that you have passed the exam and on at least three different AP exams. And I think that that's pretty amazing.
So as you know, we had a lot of in-school departmental time with our schedule this year. That is going away. But this, this work will continue next year. And we did a lot, we got a lot done with our competency, competency development this year. I, I know that the departments have shared progress with Amy. I think they're all fairly close and on the same page of where they're at. Next year, we're going to dive in common, to common assessment, developing common assessments. And then we're hoping the Rubik development for evaluation will be in the third year. So that is ongoing work. And we partnered with the NHLI, who will be helping us again next year. So that was a, a lot of work this, this year as well. And then finally, you know, I, we completed our first year NIASC report and submitted to, to NIASC. And we just really reflected on where we're at with their report and updated our growth plan and, and then just laid out kind of our plan for the coming years. And we have not heard back from them yet. So. And that's it. And I just want to say, you know, for everyone involved in the district, the school board, every staff member at the high school, every student at the high school, I just want to give a great shout out because it was a, a really great year. And that's a result of everybody coming together and, and making it that. So, thank you.
Comments and questions from the board?
Thank you for a great presentation.
Thanks.
I just want to say that three out of four years, that makes them a dynasty.
Yes. They're an awesome group, that's for sure. Thank you again. That was wonderful.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to our teacher evaluation model presentation. There's several packets, several pieces of this in your packet.
So good evening. As Chair Peters just said, there is a fairly large packet in your, in your materials tonight to give you an overview of our new rubrics and our anchoring documents. And I'll just take, ask the other members of the committee to take a second to introduce themselves as you're not sitting up here at the table with Dr. Rowe and I. If you'll stand up and say your name.
I'm Amanda Lassar from Reed's Ferry.
I'm Angie Perrin from Mestrikola.
Bonnie Pecho, principal at Reed's.
Curtis Bosworth, principal of the middle school.
Laurie Sylvia, J News.
Barb Di Francisco, retired.
Thank you. Thank you.
So this was a, really a collaborative effort. And we had talked a little bit about, I have some slides, but I want the committee to be able to add some important information as we go. So I don't know if they, you know, want to come up to the microphone or if you can hear them from where they are. It's kind of awkward, as you can see.
Well, they can always use that mic right up there.
Okay, great.
Because we want to make sure everybody at home can hear it. So if they'll use that back mic, then it'll be perfect.
So starting last school year, very, very at the beginning of the school year in September, we created a committee of stakeholders. And you see some of them here. We had representation from every building. We tried to have representation from each content area. We have special ed teachers. We have department chairs. We have folks from the union. Because what we were wanting to do was review all of our teacher evaluation model materials to see if they were still meeting our needs. And after a few meetings, we did break off and did some, you know, more cohort work. There was a group of us that looked at the rubrics. There was another group that looked at some of the anchoring documents and others that looked the reflection. So what you see is really a collaborative effort among this group of people. So just to take a minute, there is a National Council on Teacher Equality. And they suggest and talk about the purpose of teacher evaluation, that we want to provide a valid measure of teacher quality by distinguishing between different performance levels. And as you look at our rubric, I think one of the goals that we had, and I'll talk about that a little later, was how do we make those rubrics as clear as we can? And also to provide very distinguished performance levels, I think before, and there are members on the committee, I hope that can speak to that, was that the language, how that happens in the evaluation process. We were using language that maybe wasn't as professional or wasn't as complimentary to the professionals that we have. So we, that was an important goal for us. Recognize strong teachers and keep them in our classrooms. Provide remediation support to the teachers that need it. And help all teachers improve their practice. Recruit and retain teachers and achieve gains in student learning and other positive student outcomes. Really, the guiding question for this group was how can we improve the teacher evaluation process here in the Merrimack School District? We wanted to prioritize collaboration between the teacher and the evaluators. Identify and agree on common language and the processes. Educate the teachers and evaluators on the measures of data and collection tools. Provide clear communicate, sorry, clear lines of communication for effective feedback. And then from that, have an avenue for us to develop the professional development that would be connected to that instruction and the observational evidence that we're seeing in the evaluations. So, would it be okay, Nikki?
Sure.
If you talk a little bit about the teacher, the current teacher evaluation model before the updates. And I know that Dr. Rowe and Lori Sylvia in the back, Angie, you were on that team, the original team? Yes. And Barb. Barb has said she's not going to talk. So I'm going to try really hard because she's retired now. We can't tell her what to do. But I'm hoping that she will jump in. So if you wanted to just talk a little bit about the original model, because I know there was a group that, that did that work.
Okay. It's me. So we were moving from a, a very old-school, traditional model where we would call a teacher and say, I'd like to come in and do an observation. And the teacher would say, okay, let me plan my perfect lesson. And then would meet for an hour and would go see the perfect lesson. And then would talk about the perfect lesson. And the data wasn't as much a part of that process. So we knew that we needed something more robust. So a committee met for a long time, many weekends, and looked at the Danielson framework, Kim Marshall's work and Marzano's work. And then kind of, as we do, created the Merrimack way to the best approach for teacher evaluation. The message from the very, very beginning was it's all about growth. And so the language was looked at. There were, there was a pilot where teachers volunteered to be evaluated, to try it out and see how it goes. And then we tweaked things here and there. And then we worked with it for several years. The components are captured in the anchoring documents, including the information about the goal setting, observations, summative evaluations, remediation, and that process of improvement, really with an emphasis on growth, growth. And so we worked a lot with the teachers to explain to them, this is going to look different. Tenured teachers or teachers under continuing contract were given a two-week window. So we would call and we would say, I'm opening your two-week window. You have from tomorrow until this date, I'll be in at some point. And the message to us was really clear. When you go in, stay. No matter what it is, you're seeing something authentic. Unless there was a reason, like that they were transitioning in a couple minutes, there were times when they wanted us to be so consistent among buildings that even if they were transitioning, they were like, but just go follow them. It's the 20 minutes, you're in. And so that was a process that we worked with for a long time. We also added observations. So it was just one observation a year. Continuing contracts still had that. But we started with five observations for our newer people for the first five years. Some of them were announced being that they got the two-week window. And some of them were not announced at all. And we, we still, you'll see some of those components that we've kept. But that's what we were working with. And we worked with it for over 10 years. As we worked with it, we noticed things that we felt really need to be updated. We had evolved, our thinking and learning had evolved, teacher evaluation model had evolved, and we were ready to take this next step. And I think the teachers were very much ready as well.
So as I mentioned earlier, we had some goals. We wanted to revise the model to be more growth-oriented and reflect the differentiated needs of our teaching professionals. So in your packet, you have this document, which really talks about, as Dr. Rowe was just going through, you know, the number of evaluations that continuing contract versus probationary teachers get. What does that goal setting look like? The rubrics themselves? What happens when you do an observation? What happens in the pre-observation and the post-observation? And the observation write-up? We were really trying, I think, and please others jump in, bring some consistency to the model regardless of what building that you were a member of, of that community. We also wanted to update the language in the rubrics. And the new rubrics are in, also in your packet. I can send you the old ones, but it just seemed like a lot of paper to give you two separate rubrics. But I'm hoping that someone could talk about the differences in the language. And I can, you know, there's an example of that along the way. But Lori, when you, can I put you on the spot? When you did the rubrics the first time, how did you land on the approaching basic?
We followed one of Danielson or one of their models.
Okay. And so now you'll see some updated language that was one of our goals. We also saw that there was some other language to clean up in some of the other documents that maybe we wanted to be a little bit more clear, as Dr. Rowe said. And as new evaluators came on, they had new ideas as well. Other, when you have administrators that have worked in other districts, maybe other, under other models, they were able to say, have you thought about this? Or maybe this would be a different way to provide that feedback. And so we had a lot of conversation about that. We also knew that some of our practices weren't sustainable for the evaluators. So one of the things that we've talked about changing in this model now is that previously, every teacher got a summative every single year. And that created some, some complications that we can talk about later in, in the slide deck. And then we also wanted to provide more meaningful opportunities for reflection, coaching, and conversations. So as Dr. Rowe talked about, we have the pre-observation and then the observation and the post-observation. And those are very tight. They are 20 minutes apiece. But we also know that our probationary teachers and continuing contract teachers, they sometimes need different things. So we wanted to be able to provide opportunity for that. And then we wanted to provide a little bit more clarity around our remediation and improvement process. So there's also an anchored anchoring document in your packet that we have been using this year and hope to use moving forward.
When I looked at the slide deck and reviewed the slides, this one was the most important to me because I think that this is where we really come together administrators and educators. The rubric language had been, does not meet standard, basic, effective, and highly effective. We started in the area of basic. If you look at the old rubric, many things in basic represented the idea that you have met standards. So the language was very positive in basic. It was good practice in most of the areas. There were a few outliers, but for the most part, basic is where you started. And then you either moved to does not meet standard or to effective. But basic didn't feel right. It didn't feel like it represented meets all basic requirements or meets all requirements. And when you look at that rubric, it's surprising. One of the things that we talked about when we met is I just read off, like, here, here is a part of the rubric. What do you think that is? And then I would say, that's basic. And would all go, wow. So it didn't feel right. And I think for teachers to start at basic and be basic, be labeled as basic, didn't seem like it represented what we were trying to say about their work. The other thing is, we all know that relationships, collaboration, building trust is so important. And if we're going to use a rubric which names a teacher basic, but all of their skills look really good and definitely sufficient, that doesn't, again, build that rapport, make a teacher feel like, you know, they're doing their job. And it's just a simple word. But we lived with it for a long time. When we got together, that was probably the first conversation that we had. Basic really turned into meets expectations. And then we developed a language for, well, if you don't meet expectations, what does it look like if you're almost meeting expectations? Because that's growth. That label, I'll name the labels to you now, are does not meet expectations, approaching expectations, meets expectations, and exceeds expectations. Those feel like growth. Those feel like if you earn a approaching expectation, there is a, a positive presupposition that you're working your way towards meeting that expectation. That feels a lot better. And then if you do meet all basic expectations, then you've met expectations. So we looked at that language very carefully, choosing which areas of basic fell in that meets expectations, which ones really fell in the approaching expectations. And we developed some new language to make that very clear. So I think that when we look at this rubric- So, I think that when we look at this rubric and when we share it with teachers, that's the most significant part. It feels like the language represents a growth model.
And there were some pieces here and there that were just, you know, one of the things that popped out was about technology. There was this part in the rubric that if you didn't use technology, you couldn't be effective. And we just know that that's not actually true, right? You can have a very powerful lesson that doesn't involve any type of technology. But it was a barrier to, I think, administrators and evaluators being able to have the conversation with teachers about their practice. Because as soon as they saw the basic language, I mean, that doesn't feel great. I don't know if teachers want to jump in about the basic versus expectations or...
I think you hit the nail on that. Yeah, basic is just not a complimentary label.
That's right. So, you'll see that down below, we're moving away from the terms that Dr. Rowe talked about. And we're adopting "does not meet expectations," "approaching," "meets," and "exceeds." And then within the new rubric, you'll also see that we were very purposeful in showing a continuum of growth rather than these here or there kind of arbitrary and capricious things that you're throwing into a lesson. You know, if you use a computer, you can be effective. That didn't seem right. The next change, I would say, was about the summative evaluation reports. So, as a teacher on a continuing contract that has been here for, I don't know, Barb? How many years? 38 years. You know, once you've been in a place for a long time, it can be hard to not say the same things year in and year out. So, some of the feedback we got from teachers was, "You know, I'm doing a lot of the same things. I know that I'm a valued member of this community. I really want my feedback to be a little more targeted." And that is, it's tricky to do when you also have summatives for a lot more probationary teachers. And I know that many of you have been in education. And it's just the sign of the times right now. There is more turnover. There are people that are leaving the profession. We are getting new teachers. And so, when you have, you know, 15, 20 new teachers in your building and you have to do more observations for them, you want to spend your time helping them transition and acclimate to their new community. So, what we've talked about is, does a veteran staff member need a summative every year? And we decided that they didn't. We decided that instead, we would put in what we're calling an annual reflection form and opportunity to meet with their administrator or primary evaluator to talk about their practice. But in the new model, the probationary teachers, they will continue to be given a comprehensive summative evaluation every year for their first five years in the district. So, if you are a continuing contract, you will get that summative when you renew your license through the DOE. So, your recertification cycle. And we also spent a lot of time on the evaluation form that is in your packet. We tried to give it some structure. But what we really wanted there was the opportunity for a veteran, you know, continuing contract teacher to really come in and talk to their administrator about what's going well, what does support look like for them? And then also to share some of the exciting things or new things that they're doing or trying in their classroom. But by definition and design, this form is very simple. We did not want something that was going to bog down, you know, that reflection process. Because, I don't know if other evaluators want to talk about it, but the summative takes a long time. How much time do you think you might spend on each summative? Two hours?
Yep.
Two hours. So, and that's, you know, not that it's not important work, but the, most of that work would take place outside of the school day. So, you would be spending weekends, all of your vacations. And as a continuing contract teacher, you know, does everybody need that level? We had decided that they didn't.
Oh, yes, Bill, please. Yes, I'd rather stop talking altogether, so it's great.
Thank you. I just want to speak to this from a union side of the house as well, okay? And we sent out the EPEC rubric and some of this information to all of our members and got some really good feedback. Three things, I think, stood out for them. One was the higher level of trust that's just drenched in this new document. We really feel, as veteran teachers, many of us, that it really assumes a level of competence, okay? That we start there, okay? That was one big deal. Another thing, I think, is, I'm always really pushing this. This is also opportunity, this model that we have, to talk about what you're doing, you know, how you're growing yourself. And it's really important that teachers understand that it's not just that 20-minute observation. That's important. But it's this reflection and this discussion, this ongoing discussion with your, you know, administrators and evaluators about how you're going to continue to grow going forward. And then finally, I think the idea of the summative once every three years, aside from the obvious joy this will bring many of us who do some of these evaluations in having to, you know, cut some of that back. That doesn't mean that those first few years, when you're not giving a full summative, that they're not important. You know, I know that, you know, Assistant Superintendent Amy Doyle has done some of this work with other districts. And that whole idea about having a sit-down and talking again about professional growth and what you're doing in the years in between the summatives is good work. And I think that people found that meaningful.
Anyone else want to jump in? Want to say anything, Bonnie? No? Okay, thank you. Bonnie was unpacking wit and wisdom all day. You can tell.
Yes, I have the sneakers on to prove it. So, one of the things that I really appreciate about this change is how the language was really tightened up between the different areas on the rubric. And how it is really focused on growth and supporting and growing educators from the educators who have just started their careers, but also the veteran teachers. It gives us that opportunity of discussion and reflection and opportunity for, as administrators, to learn more about what they're doing through that conversation. I will say, I always, and I still stick to the 20 minutes, but I do struggle with that 20 minutes. And the reflection with the veteran teachers just gives us an opportunity to have those rich conversations about what they're doing to grow that then we can share with the other educators in the building. So, we're really excited about the language in this, the process. It's going to be great as a growth model.
I also wanted to point out that there are opportunities. If a continuing contract teacher really wanted a summative, they can ask for one. If an administrator, if, you know, there's an issue of remediation or improvement, the administrator can say, "We're going to have a summative this year." So, you know, just as we move into this new model, there's differentiation available. And that was something that both the administrators and evaluators and the teachers wanted. They wanted those opportunities to be able to say, you know, if there's a unique situation or an opportunity where we think more clarity or they want more information, you know, and that's on page six as you look through that anchoring document where you can talk about that. We've just tried to put some, you know, more clarifying that if you're a continuing contract teacher or you're on a remediation plan, you know, you would absolutely be given a summative in that year. One of the other things that we did that's in your packet is drafted a template. We really didn't have one. It was something that each time a teacher maybe needed some remediation, it would be, you know, dependent on the administrator or the evaluator to say, "Here's what, you know, I think you should be working on." So, we really tried to put some, you know, a template for a plan in place. And that was really requiring us to set what the goal was, what the action items were, when we were going to be observing and following up on that, who was going to be responsible for that, whether that's the department head or a special ed coordinator or a building administrator, and what was the evidence that we were going to collect. And as I said, you know, this is a working document. You know, we have used it a couple of times this year. And, you know, it seems to be, you know, serving the needs that we, you know, were hoping that it would. And so, that's what we have. I don't know if anyone else wants to add anything or feel like I've missed anything or if you have questions or additional clarification. The other document that's in your packet is sort of a standalone. One of the things that we try to do every school year when we have new evaluators, this year, Dr. Rowe and Mrs. DeLuca from Thornton's did a training with our new observers and really went through, what does it look like? They modeled it, you know, really showed them, what does a pre-conference look like? What do you do during the observation? What do you do during the post-observation? And so, this is really, you know, a sheet that an evaluator could take with them into an observation to just remind them, okay, within this document, there's a lot more details. The rubric is also lengthy. This is just, you know, pretty much taken from that anchoring document. But it's more of like a condensed or a summary of the process. Questions, comments from the board? Lori?
So, my first question is, so administrators are still doing walkthroughs?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. So, the walkthroughs are not used for observation purposes unless there was something that really stood out that would have, okay? Because, so what I was thinking is just like, I love the reflection and I really totally understand veteran teachers because, you know, I was a veteran teacher. And the main thing is, it just really does come down to collaboration and trust. And one of the things that, in my past practice, that really, really worked is that veteran teachers got together and they did something called grand rounds. And so, they would go into each other's classrooms. They would schedule times. And they would write evaluations on each other. And then they would share that. And that would be a part of their professional development. Because what I find is, there are so many really, really exceptional teachers in schools. And teachers don't ever get to see them teach. Only administrators get to see them teach. And sometimes when you're a teacher and you're doing so many great things and then you have other teachers come in and they go, "That was like the best lesson and I learned something new." That's my only feedback. Like, just to keep that collaboration and not have them feel like they're isolated and make them feel that they are doing home runs every year. Because they know, at the end of the year, they'll go, "Well, you know, this really worked and this really didn't work." And I just want them to always have that passion and to feel appreciated.
One of the things, just to that point, that I think is important to note, and it makes my heart sore. Teachers will call and they'll say, "I'm doing this awesome lesson. Do you want to come down and see it?" So, we get those phone calls often, much more often than you would think. And that is just such an incredible sign of trust. They're not coming in to say, "Come evaluate me." They're like, "I have something and I want to share it. I want you to see it. I worked really hard." And so, that has been part of the culture. And I think that this will help that to grow even more when people feel so excited about what they're doing, they're reaching out to you, like, "Come see me."
And the only other thing is, I do love the language piece. And ever, anybody who's ever had to put together a teacher evaluation model knows how much energy and time goes into every word, you know? It's so much work. So, I really do applaud that.
So, to what you, your point, what you were saying is, we have had different grade levels going in and observing each other and having that really powerful feedback. And then another thing is also that vertical. When a kindergarten teacher goes and sees a fourth-grade teacher, a fourth-grade sees a kindergarten teacher, and then they see the connection of what, they're like, "Oh, now I see that connection and why we're doing some of those things." Plus, you know, as a former fifth-grade teacher, one of the most powerful things was to observe kindergarten and see where it's all building from. So, we're continually working on that. And having subs is really helpful with that kind of thing, so.
So, I really enjoyed reading through the rubric. Part of my self-evaluation as a teacher is I get to go through a very similar rubric and I rate myself before I have my meeting with my administrator. And that rubric is excellent. I really appreciate it. I am going to make a comment and a question. And I do want to reiterate, I am a teacher who gets evaluated annually and I am an administrator who has to do evaluations. So, I'm on both sides of that sticky wicket. I love that in New Hampshire, we have a lot more independence in our school districts. And that we, our state legislature doesn't dictate from the Department of Education what our teacher evaluation model looks like. But a lot of states are recognizing that we need to build trust in our profession, which is absolutely true. I love that. The collaboration coaching model of this is fabulous. But we have an entire other constituency we have to build trust with. And that's the parents and the community. So, what I'm wondering is, as other states are moving, as fractional portion of a teacher's evaluation, where student learning outcomes, parent surveys, and student surveys play into the teacher evaluation? Or is that even a component of the evaluation system?
I would say, when we were meeting, you know, we did not talk about parent surveys or student surveys. That type of data did not come up. But absolutely, you're looking in the fourth domain about assessment. And when you are going into a classroom and you're looking at the formative and summative assessments as evaluators go in, sometimes you are seeing an assessment. Sometimes you're seeing an exit ticket being done or you're going through that process of, you know, a review. So, I do feel like assessment is captured in this document. We are not at the point right now where we're looking at, you know, iReady proficiencies and New Hampshire SAS data. And I just don't, you know, I don't think we're there yet. Maybe we will get there. But really, right now, what we're really looking at, I like the word that Dr. Rowe said earlier, that authentic conversation that you're having. Because once you have the trust and you have the common language about what is the expectation? I'm meeting the expectation? And I do think that as we become more of a data-driven district, where we're looking at our assessments and we're, you know, doing that as part of our PLTs. At the last meeting, Principal Bozeman and Assistant Principal Hopper, we're talking about adding a data manager to their PLT meetings. And in July, you're going to meet the wonderful Bonnie Henson, who is our student data collection specialist. We are just now having the infrastructure, I think, to have those conversations about data. And not that teachers don't know the students in front of them, but they, you know, as educators, you know, you're not just looking at each individual student. You're looking at your class. And then you're looking at, how are your special education students doing? Are they meeting your expectations? How are the English-language learners doing? Do they meet their, meeting your expectations? So, we're not at the point yet, and I don't want to speak out of turn, where we're having those district expectations related to their evaluation or summative.
And I think that, I appreciate that answer. I think that was very fair. I do know, prior, I think just prior to you coming on board, Amy, the board had discussed having a 360 evaluation kind of goal. And I think we'd like to move towards it. And again, as a teacher, I recognize how uncomfortable parent surveys might be. Or, and there's good ways to word them, to get good data and not just, you know, all kinds of wacky things. We want really good data from parents. And same with student surveys. And again, I would see those only as a tiny fraction of that 360 evaluation. Because there's so much that goes on in a classroom that professionals we recognize and maybe students or parents don't. But I appreciate you sharing that we're not there yet. I appreciate that.
And there are tools, you know, you know the Panorama survey that comes from the state. And we, you know, we're required to push that out. They give us the results. I just don't, you know, we don't get a lot of response, you know, to that. We put it out and it's just, I don't know if it's representative of the entire community.
I was just going to say, when I was a classroom teacher, I always gave my students a teacher evaluation. And, you know, they didn't have to put names on it. And I used that data. It was just in my classroom, a safety thing. And that's how I felt like I became a better teacher by reading my students' comments. Because, you know, except for one time, they told me I needed to lose 10 pounds. And that was, that just messed me up for my whole summer. But other than that, it was okay. Now, I wonder what they would say.
I do the same thing. I use an anonymous Google form and have my students give feedback. And one of the questions is, "What can I do different?" And it's a very vulnerable, yeah, "How could I improve this class for you?" And those kind of questions. And it is, it's a safety thing, but it's also a clarification of the curriculum. What did they learn? What did they not learn? What did I thought, think they learned but didn't learn?
Ken?
And we definitely have teachers give surveys. You know, it's just not mandatory as part of this process. Sorry, Ken.
No, no apology necessary. I really appreciate all the work that went into this. And I personally really enjoy being observed. I've always said to my administrators, "You can come into my class anytime you want and observe." And I think, I think teachers should feel that way. I think it's okay to let administrators and folks who you work with come in. And again, that relationship that, and those conversations that come about are so important. Because, you know, I remember in my practicum, we had to film ourselves teaching. When you're learning, you guys, like, the VHS tape. I had to put it in and it was absolute torture, absolute torture to sit and watch it. But I learned so much about what I, how many likes I said, how many ums I said, how many times I would repeat myself or not, you know, communicate the way times I would repeat myself or not, you know, communicate the way I wanted it to. And so having a dedicated administrator coming in to observe regularly and just give you that feedback is really insightful. And I've definitely had administrators or schools in the past where I would get observed like every couple of years, maybe once, and I, I knew when they were coming, and like, I could have these kids burp the alphabet and they're going to say I did great. And, and I knew, I knew they had no idea who, what I was doing. And so having that kind of relationship and that trust is, I just think such an important part of that. And I can't believe the word "basic" was in that. It's really kind of disturbing to think about how long that was in it, because we wouldn't write that down on a kid's rubric. You wouldn't say "basic" and say, "Good job." And so I just don't, yeah, I'm, I'm really happy about that change. So thank you. Really nice job.
Jenna?
So this is all really great. I think this has been a long time coming. As a parent and as a, as an educator, this, I think this looks fantastic and I'm, I'm excited about it. I share definitely the thoughts of the board members that have spoken already. I want to ask or say something that really, that kind of goes in a different direction, but I think could connect to this. So when you're doing these evaluations and teachers meet with administrators, do they have an opportunity to share how they think things are going in the building? I, I, I know that's kind of a different question. That's not really what we're talking about. We're not, we're talking about teachers being evaluated. But I, over the last couple of weeks, have heard from people, like, what, I'm just wondering, what is the platform for teachers to share how they think things are going in the building? Does it happen in that evaluation conversation? Does it happen? Does it happen? Maybe is the first question. And if it doesn't, how can we allow it to happen? Like, how can we show professional respect to teachers by looking at them and saying, "How do you think things are going?" Not just for you, but in our building, as general feedback, you know, "Are, how are things going here?" You know what I mean? I was just curious. It says I have you all here. I know it isn't exactly related to this, but I have you, so many of you here. It makes me excited.
So one thing that's very powerful about this is that we've worked really hard to make it uniform. So you have that pre-observation conference if a teacher would like that, and that's mostly about building your understanding of their classroom, you know? Like, you might see the student do this. This is the reason why. And just really helping the administrator to make sure that they understand why things may happen, or, you know, if they, if they have anything that they want to share, but it's really specifically about their class. Then it's the 20 minutes for the observation, and then the 20 minutes of the meeting for feedback. Every building collects the information you're talking about differently. So I'm going to give you the example of my building. We have an amazing MTA representative, and we meet with him and MTA members once a month. And they come to us with their thinking, you know, what's going on, questions that they have, anywhere from maintenance issues to like PD opportunities. And so, and different MTA members join, so it's, anyone can come. Different people represent their grade level, and we do that every month. And so we have those conversations in a very safe space. It's the MTA representative, who's Adam Goodman, myself, Assistant Principal Meg Fowler, and then any of the teachers that sign up that want to come for that day. And so sometimes what you'll hear a teacher say is like, "I've talked to several teachers. I'm here representing this idea." And so we'll talk about it. I'll give you an, an example. So conferences, you know, we do conferences, and it matters in a teacher's schedule when conferences are scheduled. Like if you have conferences on two Mondays, that's really hard, because you're exhausted, and then you can't run on Tuesday. So they'll give us feedback about things like that. Like when you're considering conferences, might you consider, you know, Wednesday on one night and a Thursday on another? Little things like that. Ideas about how to like boost staff morale, if it's like been a really cold and wet January, they might come in and say like, "Could we do something at staff meeting?" So it's a wide range, because we don't limit it to anything in particular. It's just, what do you want to share? And I know that different buildings do things different ways, but there, there is definitely that platform for teachers to come. And so for us, it's organized once a month.
I did a, I did a survey earlier in the year. It was really focused on our new schedule, but also staff well-being, and there was a lot of open-ended questions, and we did get a lot of feedback from, from faculty. I meet with Bill and Reggie Bates and Don Chisholm regularly, just about staff morale and staff climate. And then in a high school, you know, those type of check-ins just kind of happen organically through everyday conversation with teachers. And, you know, I've had, I had many, many conversations with teachers this year about how they're feeling, how's, how's their classroom. So it's just, just a variety of different ways at the high school, we get that input. I didn't want to take a knee there, sorry. At, at the middle school, during those conversations with teachers, we, as alluded to, is 20 minutes, we really wanted to focus on them for sure. Sometimes it comes up, if they're struggling with advisory or whatever it might be, then of course it could lead to a building conversation. We have monthly meetings with our MTA representative as well, but at the middle school, we also have our faculty council, which is a representative from each grade level, each team, each UA, to be able to kind of come together. And what's great about that is we meet twice a month, and it's in a setting and in a forum that we have built a lot of trust and in a safe place. So then if there was a teacher that brought up a concern, they would send that to their faculty council representative, and it was, and it, what's so great is that it wasn't just, you know, here's something that we have questioned about or concerned about, but hey, let's solve this. And now we've got all the minds in the building, being able to kind of, "Oh, well, it won't work for UA. Oh, that will work for eighth grade." And so really kind of solution-driven is what we try to do at the middle school. And I know every school is different, but that would be kind of the feedback from there, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
And honestly, I will speak for all three of the lower elementaries, because it's, we collaborate so much that we do very similar things. So we meet with the MTA once a month and the Mesa reps once a month, so that absolutely. In addition, the authentic conversations. At Reed's, we call it the Growth Committee. I know at MES and Thornton's, same type of committee, different name, but a grade level rep comes, and we just have a conversation about, "How can we improve our, our culture? What can we do to support you, to support kiddos, to support families?" So they bring up ideas and we, we, we brainstorm. We brainstorm a lot on the cafeteria. And we're, we're actually putting things together to really improve that with like maybe quiet, a quiet luncheon and things like that. So we have those opportunities. I will say our systems of care, it's another opportunity to, excuse me, to have those conversations. And I'll say academics-wise, when, with all our curriculum that we're, that we're launching and bringing forth, our PLTs are, are great opportunities to hear the feedback of what's going well, what's not, where do they need additional PD or support? And then we, we share it with those who can help us provide that. So lots of different opportunities of those conversations.
So what, thank you very much. It's so great to hear that. I didn't know any of that, so I just learned a lot. But what actually brought that up? Do you want to?
I'm not just saying this because my principal's here, but, because he probably gets sick of seeing me four or five times a day with usually something related to these kinds of things. The administrators are really important in that regard. We're lucky also in that we have BLT every week. And if you don't think that the department heads bring many of these things every, every week, I mean, we do. And that, you know, between the union and, and some of the department head stuff, but, but Steve is also very, he's always got his pulse on things. He wants, and he asks these questions, like, "What can we do better? What's, what's going well?" What, you know, maybe he's not going so well. So we do have a lot of opportunities to share those things.
Great, thank you. It was actually a comment, Amy, that you made, that when you, when you said, when you sit down and say, "What does support look like for you?" And I love that question. And I, and I, I hope they're being asked, like, "Do you, are you getting the support you need?" Like, are you feeling like the support that you need to be successful in the classroom is being given to you by, you know, us, the, the administration, anybody in the support, whether it's the guidance counselors, the SEL interventionists, the reading interventionists, whatever, the math people, like, are, when you have a student that has a need, and you are one person and they are 25, are you getting the support when the call comes on the walkie? You know, that kind of thing. Like, I, I hope teachers are being asked at some point. And it, it, it sort of connects to evaluation for me, because it's, you know, are they being successful, but are be, you know, are they being given the opportunity to say how, if they're getting the support they need to be successful? Is that part of the conversation? So that's just, I was honestly mostly curious, but I want, I want to make sure teachers are, are asked, "Are you getting what you need?" Because if they're not, those are the things that we may be able to use, looking forward to build our budgets, or build, you know, just build support for them and capacity for them, because teaching is hard. There's a lot of kids and a lot of behaviors and a lot of needs, and I just want to make sure they are getting what they need as well.
May I make a comment on that? Because this is the time of year that is always very enjoyable, and that is when I hire a person, I do so with the following condition, that they come back in late April or May, their first year of teaching here, and tell me about their first year's experience, what has been positive. But equally, if not more importantly, I want them to tell me, what are their suggestions for improving what we do and, and how we do it? All part of culture, and a progressive, inspiring, motivating, encouraging culture, where everyone feels empowered to make some suggestions. That's, I think, and that's how we are all, particularly the, the work on this committee. I, I have to say, you have done absolutely outstanding work, because the evaluation system in any school district is one of the most important instruments and processes, but it's the philosophy behind it also. Combining, how do you combine accountability, which is essential, but you do so in a way that is not punitive and provides a degree of psychological safety to the staff, where they know that it is all of us who have the potential to make a, a great difference and change in a school district. And this is not a punitive instrument, nor is intended philosophically to be that type of instrument. And so just an outstanding job, and thank you to everyone, because this really provides the accountability, but does so in a means that says, "We are in, we are in fact in this together, and we are all interest, interested in growing as professionals," which translates to an outstanding experience for students. So one of the most significant pieces of work that's been done, and have to thank you tremendously for such an outstanding job.
And I would echo that completely. I did pull up my evaluation, since you brought up the question. At the end of my pers, my self-evaluation and where I put my goals for the next year, are two questions. Do you feel supported? Yes, no, why or why not? And in what ways can we improve? And it's just, it was a place where I could put my thoughts that were read offline, not with me sitting there, not having to have that face conversation, and digested and processed by my administration before we had our conversation. And so those two questions were very, very helpful, and I think that gives what you're looking for.
Yeah, I mean, I just think as leaders in a district, we have a responsibility, especially if, if we're saying a teacher needs to, you know, meet expectations or move higher up into that growth model, to say, "Yeah, you have these goals and these are the things you need to do, but how can we help you do that?" Right? Because so that they don't feel alone. Like, I don't want them to feel like, oh, your, their job's online and good luck, I hope that comes back better next time. And I'm not saying, none of you do that, I'm, I'm sure. I'm just saying, that's, that's, I want to be a district where teachers are like, "No, if they tell me things aren't going great, they're going to come alongside me and make sure I get where I need to be, just like I would do for my students."
So I just have two quick things to say on that. First of all, I'm a special educator at Reed's, but I'm also the torchbearer facilitator for the district. And I don't know if this was the first year, Bill, you did that, meeting with first-year teachers, but it was the first time I knew about it, and the teachers really enjoyed it. The teachers that talked to me were very, you know, happy to do it, were very glad they got to do it and give feedback to Bill about what was going well, what might not be going well. So I think that was great. The other thing is, we did just get a survey from, I believe it was HR, I believe it was Melissa, asking sort of those questions that you're talking about. That's an anonymous survey to teachers. The question will be, "Do teachers feel comfortable filling that out?" You know, depending on where that goes. I've heard a little bit about that. Teachers just not necessarily feeling comfortable necessarily filling those types of surveys out, even though it's anonymous, so.
And I appreciate you saying that. I think everybody here, everybody at this table and, and most of you, we want to be the kind of district where... Oops, sorry. We want to be the kind of district where you can say those things to us and we'll do what we can't. I mean, we might have to say like, "That's, we can't fix that," or whatever. I don't know what that, an example of that would be. But I, I think we're all moving in the direction that we want to be the kind of district that can hear that feedback, comfortable or uncomfortable as it may be, and work to try to address the situation to help staff members. At that, I mean, I'm speaking for myself, maybe.
No, you're, I, I agree 100%. And I do want to say this, I have complete, as, as a member of this board, complete trust in Melissa that those surveys are anonymous. They are completely anonymous.
Oh, 100%.
So I want to encourage teachers to be honest.
And I think, I would like to think as administrators, you want honesty. You want to know. I mean, it makes your job easier if the teachers in your building know, "Okay, this is not going great." Like, and if you can fix it, then you can, and everybody's happier? Awesome.
Lori?
So I, I just have a couple of things. So yesterday I was at a graduation party, and so a, a teacher that is in the district, four years ago, I ran into that teacher, and they were ready to leave the district. And they told me that, at that point in time, they just did not feel supported. There was lots of reasons why they were ready to leave. And so yesterday, they were like, "I have to tell you how much things have changed in the district." And I said, "Well, can you give, can you give me more information?" Like, and they go, "Well, number one, we were training all these new teachers, because everyone would come to Merrimack, and one or two years they were leaving. So our jobs were to train the new teachers. So we spent so much time training new teachers, we had no time to reflect on our own practice and what we were doing. And so now people are, first of all, you're hiring these wonderful people, and these people are coming in and they're giving us ideas, and so the whole climate and culture has changed." And then she said, "And Bill and Amy know my name." And that was to me, everything, right there. "Bill and Amy know my name." That's it, right there. We got it.
Any final comments or questions?
I appreciate you saying that. I would like everyone to wear a name tag when I go into a building. Some people I see a lot, and others, I'm like, "Is it Carrie?"
Well, I want to thank everyone that's been on this committee and the hard work and the long hours that you've put into it. We really appreciate it. We appreciate the due diligence and the excellency of this model.
Very well done. Thank you. And thank you, Mrs. D. Francisco, for all your service. Particularly to my child.
All right, moving on to Chief Executive Education Officer, Bill Olson's evaluation. Every member of the board gave their feedback to Lori, and she and I compiled all that into the document that is in front of you tonight. Lori and I met with Bill last Thursday to go through this. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but I want to say for the public that the school board has rated Bill in educational leadership, culture, school district goals and district management, budget and operations, and communications as distinguished. We are thrilled to have Bill onboard, and we love working with him. We walked through some of these things, just some of the highlights, the, the development of the strategic plan and working through that. The change in culture, celebrating teachers, celebrating students, celebrating staff. It's just been a wonderful change to see since I've been working with Bill. Bill is a leader that has a great deal of moral fortitude and integrity in leading this district. We live in a society right now where trust is hard to come by, and I think most people, and I will put this on myself, just generally distrust people I don't know. And there is a culture of distrust, not just here in Merrimack generally, but in our country. And I think it has been because for a long time, there was a lack of accountability. But Bill has provided a culture and support for this district and earned the trust and earned the respect of the faculty and staff in this district, as well as the board. And so I want to say that while we don't always agree on the board, we don't always agree with administration, and we are share, we share that and we are open about it, there is a relationship of trust and respect with Bill and with his leadership team. And his evaluation reflects that. We are excited about our goals, the goals we have accomplished, working with Bill and Amy and Matt and Melissa. And... And we look forward to checking a whole bunch of them off on Thursday because of the work and leadership he has provided and creating more and moving forward. This year in particular, the budget season was extraordinarily difficult. Rightfully, people had questions and concerns, especially with the increase in taxes in December. And that's not just here in Merrimack. It's not just in New Hampshire. It is across the country a problem. And Bill, as a leader, navigated those questions and concerns well. And he and his team listened to the taxpayers when we went to the default budget and provided the necessary changes that needed to happen. And that was one of the most difficult things a district leader can do. And he did it with grace and commitment. One of the other things, the last things that I want to mention that we appreciate about Bill is he recognizes where there are weaknesses and is open about sharing those with the board, sharing it with his team, and coming up with solutions. We have talked multiple times in the last couple of months about wanting to improve our communications with the public. And Bill was the one who brought forth the first vocalization of that concern, although we're all in agreement, we all were recognizing it. But he is on top of moving forward with exciting communication solutions. And he is a problem solver. And so not only is he honest and transparent in areas that he sees needs for improvement, he comes to the table with solutions. And so we appreciate that him as well. Bill will be reflecting on this and giving us his reflections. Obviously, with graduation, we would not expect him to do that prior to tonight. Any comments from the board? Lori?
I just have a quick one. During Lori and our meeting, Bill always, he's he's just so modest. And so he would say, well, I can do better here. And so I want everyone to know, I gave him a directive tonight that he's not allowed to tell us where he feels like he can improve. He just has to listen to all the things we have to say to him.
I would also add, and I'll give you a second again, that he is extraordinarily willing to give away the praise to others. And we also told him he had to sit and take it from us tonight.
Yeah, and last year I spent a lot of time with Bill when I was in your seat. And through what was an interesting year budget-wise. And every time I got together with Bill and had a conversation with him, it was it was just, it was just a Monday. It was just a Tuesday. It was like, yeah, we're going to get through this and it's going to be okay. And it was just, just to have that consistent calm, it was just such a relief in many ways. And I just want you to know, Bill, I didn't give you a single basic on anything. So thank you again for all your work.
Jenna.
So I want to say that the people in this town will be happy to tell me what they think about your doing, you know, as they have in the past. And I have heard nothing but good things. And that, I think, speaks volumes because I feel like, you know, in the past, people had been very critical of leadership and I have not heard that at all. All I've heard is, wow, we've been really impressed, you know. And it's, you know, they don't see, I don't, the specifics, but they feel something changing. They can't necessarily, sometimes they know exactly what it is, but, you know, they really are seeing progress being made. And that is certainly a credit to you and the team that you work with. And I'm grateful for that very much. And I will say, there were definitely times this past year where I personally was like, on the verge of losing it. And I remember you were so calm and I thought, all right, I'm not going to freak out if Bill's not freaking out. I guess we're cool. He's good. Like, you really do. You bring a sense of, it's all going to be fine. And I'm pretty sure that's exactly what you said to me. And it was indeed fine. So, thank you.
Lori, can I add something?
Yes.
It's probably not appropriate, but here I go. This is exactly how he is on the day-to-day as well. And so your comments, he never gets worked up. I mean, there's fire trucks going on and going by. And I'm like, Bill, I think we better go outside. He's fine. Bird flies into his window, doesn't even flinch. I'm like, we should go check that bird. He's fine. You know, his most, he's funny. He just brings a real sense of lightheartedness. But when you go into a tough meeting, he also has your back. So it is this, you know, great combination. So I'm, you know, listening, you know, as the woman in waiting, that's what I've called myself now. I'm like, you know, the woman in waiting. I've been able to learn so much, right, about how do you prioritize? And he's just, that's how he is every day. And it's just great that you're also seeing what we see.
Thank you, Amy. I have to, may I just say that I view that evaluation as a reflection on the people I work with. But I have to, I have to say it. The three of the finest people with whom I have ever worked, Amy, Matt and Melissa, and the outstanding leadership team and the staff in this school district. And I can't tell you how much I enjoy working with all of you because the relationship between a person who is in charge of the school district and a school board should not be like a chess game. Okay? We all have the same objectives. We all have the same goals. And that is to try and do the best that we can for children in this district, period. It's not about us. It's about children. And it is very refreshing to work with people like yourselves who come to this position, spend a lot of time on it, but you have no personal agenda other than doing what's right for kids. And that's, that's what makes it so enjoyable to work here. And I love the environment. I've already told my wife, you know, I said, you know, I only have two more years to go here. And I said, I'm trying to prep myself for leaving already because it's going to be hard to tear myself away from Amy, Matt and Melissa and all of you. And I mean that seriously because it's, you come to work every day saying, how can it be any better than this? And knowing that, yes, there are always going to be ups and downs. There are always going to be complaints from parents saying, you did nothing for my son or my daughter or this or that. And look, I don't get angry at anyone because if they're not passionate about their own kids, who is, who's going to be? And so it is just an absolute delight to work here. And I hope that, not me, I hope that we are making a wonderful change that will serve this district well for many years to come.
Well, we agree that your team is outstanding. We absolutely do. But it is a joy to work with you as the one at the top. So we appreciate it, Bill.
Thank you very much.
All right, do we have any other new business? All right, we have a policy, the first reading of promotion and retention. Turn it over to Bill.
Well, we have, interestingly, we have never apparently had a promotion and retention policy. And so we were talking about it in leadership team meeting about a month ago. And I said, well, we're going to put one together and bring it to the school board. Now, I will say that, first of all, you know, to follow the normal procedure, you will make a motion to waive the first reading. But I do want to let you know that I've received a few last-minute comments from the principals that we're going to take a look at and evaluate in terms of maybe the nuancing of a little bit of the language in the policy and the procedures. So don't be surprised if, in the second reading, and we will highlight those nuanced changes that we're going to review with our legal counsel also in terms of those suggestions. And so there may be a couple of changes bringing it back. But I think it's very important that we have something on the books that says, what happens when a parent requests or we recommend retention or promoting a student, you know, to a higher grade level than by chronological age they would ordinarily progress to. So it's kind of a first for us and glad to bring it forward and look forward to bringing you a slightly revised model perhaps the next time also.
Do I have a motion to waive the first reading?
I'll make a motion to waive the first reading.
Moved by Ken Martin. Seconded by Naomi Halter. All those in favor? 5-0-0. We'll look forward to that revised model. All right. For those of you watching on TV, we rearranged our schedule tonight for various reasons. So we are going to go what is normally at the top of our agenda to informational updates.
Well, I want to congratulate our great class of 2024, Chase and all her classmates. It was a wonderful graduation. You know, I've heard nothing but great things about them. And so we wish them the best of luck and a wonderful future. And we will always be around in some way, shape or form to provide them with any assistance, any letters of reference and recommendation and help because it just doesn't end when they graduate. We care about them deeply and we want them to know that. I want to congratulate Matthew Brown. Most of you have seen that email from Rosemary Rung. First of all, I congratulate her for filing this legislation. Matthew, two years ago, when he was an eighth grader, and you know, Matthew has been on with Chase, our strategic planning committee, and very, very active and valuable and valued contributors. But two years ago, he suggested to Representative Rung that there be a eating disorder hotline number placed on a student ID. Now, the first time that went through the legislature, it was not enacted because it needed a little bit of work. However, that has been passed by the legislature and has now known, this is quite a distinction, as Matthew Brown Act. And so we're going to bring Matthew in at, I'm going to wait until August or September when everyone is back for vacation so we can appropriately recognize Matthew. He is an outstanding student, outstanding contributor, friend to many students. We had a meeting, Mr. Claire this morning and I had a meeting with several of the students about the Gateway Room. And we have some interesting alternatives that we're looking for as a kind of an alternative to that. It was a wonderful conversation. And there were four students there. We will meet again. And Matthew was a key contributor there. And so we congratulate him. And we congratulate Representative Rung on that particular piece of legislation. I'm going to keep it brief because we've had a fairly long agenda, but want to wish our students, our parents and our staff a wonderful summer. I think we've had an excellent school year. There will always be speed bumps along the road here and we always know that. But we have a team, all of us here and throughout the district, who is interested in problem solving and not problem creating. And we look at every issue, try to do our best for students. And that's what keeps us coming back day after day. And so thank you for a great year and hope everyone has a wonderful, wonderful summer.
Comments from the board? I'd just like to say that Board Member Ken Martin has been excused for the rest of our meeting. All right, moving on to Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update.
Good evening. I just wanted to start off by saying this morning, we found out that the New Hampshire SAS literacy results are now in the family portal. And at our last meeting, I had said I wasn't sure when they would be in. And they are in there. So if parents want to log into the portal to see their student scores, they can do that. And if you have forgotten how to do that, our wonderful Adam Goodman has reposted the directions to tell you how to do that. So if you need that information. There's a lot happening these last three days in the school year. As I mentioned earlier, when Bonnie went to the microphone, our wit and wisdom has arrived. It's very exciting. Teachers are spending time unpacking, reviewing, looking at implementation guides. We've set up transition meetings with case managers, nurses. We have groups that are becoming CPI trained, so they're getting ready either for summer programming or for the next school year. We're offering both asynchronous and in-person Google training opportunities. As Principal Claire noted, there's some competency and department work happening at the high school. Tomorrow, we will send, you know, it's a really impressive team to the reunification training. Both Bill and Lori and I are going, as well as members of the Merrimack Police Department and Fire Department, teachers, administrators. So we're going to go and look at our crisis management and see again how we can provide the best support to our students and our school communities. Wednesday will be a building-based day. We also know that it's going to be really, really hot on Wednesday, so we're going to carefully monitor that. I also mentioned earlier that our student data collection specialist, Bonnie Henson, she is going to come to the July meeting. If that works for all of you and go over a comprehensive review of all of the data now that it's all in. She is going to give you both the raw data in a slide deck and then also kind of a high-level overview. So I've asked her to give that a couple of weeks ahead of time because there's a lot to digest there. And then like Bill, I just want to congratulate everyone on a terrific school year, our graduating class of 2024. I missed graduation this year because I had my own graduate in another town. But it was just a wonderful day. It was a little windy. Kids had to have their hats pinned down. But I just want to take a minute to thank the teachers and the staff, the parents, the families. And I hope everyone has a wonderful summer.
Comments from the board? Thank you. We'll move on to Assistant Superintendent for Business Update, Matt Chevino.
Thank you. Now comes the slow part of the year for us over here on the business side. You remember, we passed a Warren article, $797,000 for a roof at J. Muse and MES. The materials will be delivered and the staging for that will start this Thursday. So we need everybody to go home because we need the room to do what we need to do. The Safe School Grants, we've ordered all the lock sets for that grant that we received. Phase two, the second phase is the video surveillance. We'll be putting that together at the end of the, end of the week. In total, both are around $383,000 that we got from the state of New Hampshire and did not have to put on the taxpayers. That's a good thing. It's going to totally enhance our security and our safety of our buildings, which we're always striving to do. And every year we look to do better and define better ways and more innovative ways of keeping everybody safe in this school district. In the budget, there was $212,000 for split systems. We have those on order and hopefully they'll be installed this summertime. We just need the room and the spaces to go ahead and do this. And also going back a ways, I know when the MVD was here talking about salt and the brine, I just kept thinking about PFOAs. And I remember in 2017, we installed a system in each school to filter PFOAs down to zero. And so every year we test. And so we tested just now. And so every, although the water that the kids drink and everything like that that comes into the school because of this system that was put in place almost seven years ago, everything is at zero. We also want to do a test of what's coming into the school. So I want to see if anything has changed on the MVD side. But we know on our side, it's zero. So everybody should feel at least good about that, that we took that measure seven years ago. So that's it. Thank you.
Comments from the board? That's great. I'm glad it's at zero. That's wonderful. All right, the school board update. Lori Rothaus and I, along with my husband Kevin and administration, we got to attend the adult diploma graduation. It was wonderful to see those students receive their diplomas and they've worked hard. That has been a major goal for this board and the administration. And we want to thank Bill and Amy for the pathways for graduation, the work Harley Hall has done for the pathways of graduation. We look forward to seeing our dropout rate be zero. And it was wonderful to see those students. And then again, graduation was wonderful, sunny, breezy, wonderful, wonderful day. And I want to thank all of the families, friends, parents who came and supported their students. It's always exciting to hear the cheers as the students walk across and receive their diplomas. And it was, as I have told so many people, it runs like clockwork. It just runs so smoothly. And it was a wonderful day of celebration. And I still remember the salutatorian speech. I was sharing that with my family on Father's Day about the importance of your name.
I was thinking about that too, as I was pronouncing those kids' names tonight. It was right there, running as a track in my head. I mean, it's always important to me, but it was really important to me. I've had a lot of comments from people about that speech.
Yes. Well, as a mom of a daughter whose name is continually mispronounced, I could relate to that speech very well. Also, it is going to be very hot. I want to thank everyone for getting to summer. I know teachers and staff have a couple more days. But enjoy beaches this week, families. Enjoy the beach. It's going to be hot. And I am so glad those splits are coming into our school. We just got one and I am so glad it's going to work this week because it's going to be a hot one. But what a way to start summer break. Our goals meeting is Thursday. We have a non-public at 8:30 that will be in the MHS conference room. And then we will, when that is complete, we will move up to our goals meeting in the library. If you have not told Sandy what your lunch order is, please do that by tomorrow. She has put a PDF of what you can order in your email. And finally, our next meeting won't be until mid-July. So if you watch our board meetings, we will not be meeting until the middle of July. So, uh, if you watch our board meetings, we will not be meeting until the middle of July. And we kind of take a little bit of a break. It gives board members an opportunity to travel, gives administration a little less to have to prepare for, uh, twice a month. But then, uh, and we have one meeting in August and then we ba, are back to our regular schedule. Comments from the board?
Just confirming, what's the date in July?
The fifteenth.
That's what I thought.
Thank you.
Can we say the August one too while we're here?
It is. I'm gonna tell you. August 12th.
Thank you.
Fifteenth. All right, moving on to our alumni of Merrimack High School, Student Representative Update, Chase Rowe.
All right, what about now? Great. All right. Yeah, it's, it's really incredible to think that just this past Saturday, I graduated along with the class of 2024. And it really was, I mean, so many people have spoken to this tonight, but it really was an amazing ceremony. It was so efficient for such a big class. And also, we just had an amazing turnout. We always have a great turnout as somebody who's been there for the past three graduations in the band. It's just really wonderful to see so much faculty, staff, administration from the whole district, not just the high school, board members, families, and it's just a really joyous ceremony. We had some, uh, performances from the band. The band performed Say Doc Fantasy, the National Anthem. And then they also, of course, played Pumped Circumstance as the seniors walked out, which was really wonderful. And we also had the chorus perform Go the Distance from the movie Hercules, which was really great, very fitting. And as Chair Peters mentioned, we also had some really wonderful speeches from our Valid Victorian, Keishan Sharina Bawson, uh, Salutatorian, Charvi Chandra Shakeran, and Student Council, Class of 2024, Class President, David Roy. They all did an amazing job and had really great, very unique also sentiments for the graduating class. And I also just wanted to take a minute to congratulate for those that couldn't make the ceremony, the, uh, graduating top 10 for the class of 2024. So we have an order and rank, uh, as I mentioned before. Uh, Valid Victorian, Keishan Sharina Bawson, Salutatorian, Charvi Chandra Shakeran, and then Lily Farrell, Jennifer Epstein, Maya Stubbs, myself, Chase Rowe, Samantha Martin, Avery Huey, Courtney Wood, and Hayden Stewart. And it, it's funny looking at this list of names. I know so many of them. A lot of them are my close friends and it's really just a true testament to how great the school district is, all of the things in the ceremony, the music and the participation. It's really a great culmination of, you know, uh, all of our work in the year and the work of the students and staff. So thank you for that. Thank you, everyone, for running an amazing ceremony. And also the week leading up to the ceremony, I mentioned this a little bit in the last meeting, but we had a really wonderful senior week. I was really happy to participate from, uh, Monday, June 10th to Thursday, June 13th. We had a lot of exciting events. On Monday, we had Grown Ups, uh, the movie on the MHS football field, which was really fun with food trucks and some entertainment. Then we had the Hawk Walk, of course, which is a favorite among the district, where students got to connect with teachers and past, uh, teachers and students, seeing some younger students that are eventually gonna take their place at the high school. And then, of course, we had Six Flags at New England, which was a really exhilarating day, uh, one of my personal favorites. And then, of course, we ended the week on, uh, Thursday with the semi-formal on Lake Winnipesaukee on the Mount Washington Dinner Cruise, which was an amazing experience. And it's so beautiful up there too. Really enjoyed that. And in addition to congratulating the graduating senior, seniors, I also wanted to extend, uh, great congratulations to those in the awards night, both for the senior awards night and the band awards night. We reviewed the senior awards night at the last meeting. But most recently, this past Tuesday, June 11th, we also had the Band and Chorus Awards Night. And like every event, really, I'm learning, we had an amazing turnout, great family participation, uh, lots of students, even those that weren't receiving awards and those that were just coming to support their friends from different schools, uh, faculty, staff, administration. It was a really great ceremony as well as the senior awards night. And then finally, on a more technical note, um, I wanted to mention, because Mr. Claire brought this up in his presentation, for those that participated in the, in the College Board Advanced Placement Testing, this May, the scores are set to be released by College Board, according to the website, on the College Board website, A B Classroom, on Monday, July 8th, 2024. So any parents or students that took those, uh, students of parents, sorry, parents of students that took those tests that are looking forward to that, that's gonna be out pretty soon. So that's it for me. Have a great summer, as everybody said. And as always, it's an honor to be participating on this board.
Thank you so much. Any comments? It has been a pleasure and we are so, so proud of you and so excited for your future. All right, moving on to the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the May 20th, 2024 public minutes? The May 28th, 2024 non-public minutes and the June 3rd, 2024 public minutes?
I can make that motion with one tiny change to the, um, May 20th public minutes.
What, where are we talking?
My tiny change is line 146. It looks like it was, again, just a typo left over from previous minutes. There's, it says, the motion passed five zero zero, but there was no motion mentioned. And I, remembering the discussion, I don't think we had a motion in that discussion. So that line just needs to be struck.
And just as a note, my board packet didn't arrive. So I'm actually going to abstain because I did not read the minutes. And since there's a quorum, it can still pass, even if I abstain.
So I'll second.
So I have a motion with an amendment by Naomi Halter, seconded by Lori Rothaus. All those in favor, say aye? All those, uh, in, not in favor, all those abstain. It passes three zero one. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. There are a set of nominations and resignations in your packet tonight. We'll start with the resignations. Nicole Rosetta, classroom teacher at Muse. Mallory Nemzek, social studies teacher at the high school. Louis Esposito, special education teacher, Merrimack High School. Katie Angeloni, classroom teacher at Muse. Marissa Fogg, world language teacher at Muse. And Carol, uh, Carl Safko, social studies teacher at the high school. And I just want to take a minute to point out, you know, the resignation letters. Many of these people are moving into administrative jobs. Uh, we have someone that's moving into becoming an executive director for a very, uh, unique organization. Um, and all of them are so complimentary of their time here. Um, and now for the nominations, um, we have folks that are replacing, uh, many of these as well as the previous resignations, starting with Sheridan DeLeo, um, English teacher at Merrimack High School, Samantha Parker, elementary classroom teacher at Muse, Stacy Darwin, elementary teacher at Muse, Heather Davis, world language teacher, Merrimack High School, Diana Harden, SEL Support Specialist at Reed's, Emily Edwards, art teacher, Merrimack High School, Karen Mulligan, social studies teacher at Merrimack High School, and Caitlin Moran, um, videography teacher at Merrimack High School, also a Merrimack alumni. We received, you may not have seen it because it came in right before our board meeting, but we had a former board member, um, send us a letter of recommendation for Caitlin Moran. All right, do I have a motion to accept the consent, consent agenda?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Do I have a second? So motion made by Lori Rothaus, seconded by Naomi Halter. All those in favor? Say aye, four zero zero. I do want to say one thing that I love about looking at this particular list. Um, they always say a, an organization is healthy when your experience levels are a third, a third, and a third. So a third newer, third middle experience, third very experienced, and this reflects that. I'm glad to see that.
Can I just say something?
Yes.
And I was very excited because, uh, Heather Davis is returning to Merrimack High School. So she was a Spanish teacher. My children had her. She's fabulous. I had the opportunity to hire her at Campbell High School because she wanted part-time hours during her children. That she's coming back to Merrimack. She is exceptional.
All right, moving on to committee reports. I have one. I attended Joint Loss Management Committee. Uh, there has been an overall decrease in, like I said earlier, slip and fall claims. There are, uh, is, there is an increase in other types of claims, uh, that administration is working to mitigate. Teachers are encouraged to fill out incident reports, not to be afraid to do that. Uh, as part of that, um, committee and as Amy mentioned, CPI training is happening this week. Last week, uh, there was a CPR Train the Trainers, so that we can do our CPR training within our district. And there will be a safety policy coming from that committee in July before the board about inspections and walkthroughs and things like that. And that's everything I have for, oh, no, one other thing, very, very important. And, um, Matt has e, email confirmation of this. We do not have the fire marshal reports for the S A U and Student Services buildings. And that was mentioned at the committee, uh, meeting and followed up with by Matt. Any other committees? All right, moving on to correspondence. A lot of us got a lot of the same correspondence, but, um, I've had numerous, um, parent concerns just the end of the semester that I forwarded on to administration or they were already CC'd on. A couple of teacher concerns that were also forwarded on, graduation questions as well. Uh, just general end of the year wrap-up kind of correspondence. And then we have one wonderful letter of recommendation for Caitlin. And, uh, and then the invitation from Amy to go to the reunification training tomorrow and Wednesday. So, that pretty much sums up my correspondence. All right, comments from the board? Lori?
I have two. First of all, I, this is really a shout out to Matt. So, um, my youngest daughter lives in Merrimack in a condo association. She just got an $1,800 bill because they underestimated the roof cost. $1,800 bill for every condo owner because they underestimated the roof cost. So, um, I'm like, maybe Matt needs to like go over there and straighten them out. I don't know. So, I did, I wanted that. And then finally, um, you know, I don't really want to let Chase go. So I think, you know, we should invite her back to the July meeting so we can do a recognition of her, her outstanding service. She's got huge shoes to fill. I'm gonna tell you, right now, we've enjoyed it. So I, if you can come back, I think you need to be here.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for having me.
Um, I just have one additional comment. You saw on your table tonight is a copy of the draft strategic plan. Please read through that. Also, go back to, um, in your email from last July and August is the goals. If you need me to send you another copy, instead of searching, I'll be happy to do that. But please review the goals and, and from last year, that also summarizes the year before and the strategic plan. The strategic plan will be the guardrails for the goals that we set for this next year. So we want to come prepared Thursday for that. All right. Well, moving on to public comments on agenda items. I don't see anybody who will be coming to the microphone. But again, if you are watching at home, we have two type, two times of public comments. The first one is open at the beginning. The second one is on agenda items at the end. We are always willing to hear public comment at the end of our meetings, so feel free to come and join us. All right, well, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Naomi Halter, seconded by Jenna Hardy. All those in favor? Four zero zero. Thank you and good night.